Hello everyone, Roxie Sharif from Creative Candid T Incorporated is here with a special session of the Supporting Women Owned Business video series. And today, from our 10th House Collective of fellow female founders, we have the lovely, energetic, supportive, and vivaciously social Ms. Cara Ho-Holick, who is the Chief Executive Officer of the Social for Good Company in Michigan, United States. Cara, tell us about yourself and your business. Introduce yourself and your business.
Sure. Hi Roxie, thank you so much for having me. So as you mentioned, I'm the CEO of Social for Good. We are a content marketing agency that specializes in social impact marketing. So we amplify positive messaging, we build authentic communities online, and help spark belief in a vision for a better future. We work with entrepreneurs, small businesses, and nonprofits that have a social impact mission. So whether that's to be more sustainable, to be earth conscious, to work through social issues in our communities and in the world. And any of those kinds of focuses is, those are the businesses and the type of marketing that we do. And so we have a wide range of different clients and services, whether it's through graphic design, or email marketing, social media, content writing and copy, you know, we do a wide variety of things to try and help our clients get their message out to make sure that we can connect people to their mission and their message so that we can spread good and do more good in the world.
That sounds pretty amazing and to have dedicated your life to society and the common good. But explain to us Cara, how did it all start? Why social impact marketing? Where did it come from, this passion of yours? And how did you create this business of yours with this social media, social impact marketing that you have today?
It's a really great question because it's kind of been a really long winding road to get here. So I grew up on the East Coast of the United States in New Jersey, and I have a degree in sociology. And my first opportunity to travel was when I was in college. I studied abroad in Costa Rica and it was just a really unique experience for me, having grown up in a small town and not really being able to travel or, you know, meet different kinds of people. It was really eye opening for me to have that first opportunity to go out into the world and kind of learn how other people live and what their priorities are and how they run their societies. It was just really interesting and eye opening for me. And I think in general, a lot of us who have the opportunity and the privilege to go away to college or to study abroad, we kind of have that experience where we get to meet new people that, you know, grew up in different areas of the country or the world than us and we can kind of learn how, um, learn all the different issues that maybe don't plague us but plague other people. And so we can kind of learn how the world works and how we kind of fit into it. So fast forward a few years and moved to Michigan. I get a graduate degree in education. I meet my husband and we get married. I have three kids and I'm staying at home with them because the, um, the field that I was in, in higher education and in, on the administrative side, like as a woman working in higher ed, the finances were just not there to support me continuing to work. So I chose to stay home with my children so that I could raise them. And so that, that was just like financially what worked for us. And so throughout raising them and kind of seeing the world through their eyes, I realized that there was such a need for social impact work and that, you know, because I was, you know, just a stay-at-home mom, I had to kind of work through that mentality a little bit to kind of figure out where I fit into that. You know, I don't have a full-time nine-to-five job in an office or in a nonprofit where I feel like I could really make a difference, you know. What, I had to really do a lot of searching and figure out, you know, what was I good at and what could I try to do? So I got involved in a couple of different smaller businesses and side hustles and explored what that would look like. And in doing that, came across a few sustainable fashion brands. And that was kind of my big entry and introduction into the social impact space. So learning how the small tiny decisions that we can make in our everyday lives, whether that's the food that we eat, or recycling, or the clothes that we buy, and, um, you know, the causes that we support and the things that we speak out about. These are really like seemingly small things that we have control over in our lives, but they make, end up making this huge impact. And so I thought a lot about that over the years and kind of the decisions and the changes that I made and how my family lived our lives and how I was raising my children and realized that there were a lot of these businesses and nonprofits that needed help in the social media space, or needed help with their writing, or needed help with marketing ideas and things like that. And these were all things that I discovered through these small side hustles that I was good at. And so I had the idea during the pandemic to start this business, which is kind of seems like a weird time to start a brand-new business. But, you know, I found myself at home with the kids again and trying to manage virtual school with them and really feeling like I needed to find an anchor and find something that I was passionate about that I could focus on. Um, with, um, and have my kids being there and watching me kind of go through that was a really powerful learning experience. And so, um, yeah, it's been a little over a year that I started Social for Good. And we have a team of six of us now that support, like I said earlier, a wide range of clients and different types of businesses. And it's just been a really cool experience to kind of reflect back on where I started and kind of, you know, the different journey and the different paths that I took and how that all sort of came together into this one, into this one new business that I started.
Congratulations on your new business.
Thank you.
Uh, that you started it during an extremely challenging time. It only speaks to your willpower, strength, and just your compassion as a woman who is making a difference for the world, a social difference for the world. And I think in that aspect, you have pulled together actually. Maybe it came across to you upon reflection, but you have actually both the sociology and education in your business. You have the social impact with the sociology, which deals with our society, our social processes, behaviors, and exactly what you were describing, the decisions that society makes on an aggregate scale. And then you have the communication, which is the educated piece, which is the messaging behind the messages that our society promulgates forward to us. So you have both your sociology and education in. So it kind of led you to what you're supposed to be doing, your mission. So tell us Cara about whether it's through the process that you went through to become a woman business owner or to this day, the struggles and hardships that you face as a woman in business. What are those struggles and hardships for you?
It's such a good question and something I feel like we don't talk about enough. You know, I think there's challenges in all kinds of business and all kinds of careers, right? But I think especially as women, there are unique challenges. Um, I think that's true whether you're working, you know, for a company or you're starting one. So for me, there's been a few challenges. One of them in particular is related to me as a woman and as a mother. Um, I have three young children. Um, right now their ages are nine, seven, and four. Um, so they're young, elementary age and younger. And so when I was, even when I was doing those side hustles and they were babies or when they started going to elementary school and I sort of used those little pockets of time that I had, um, you know, to work on things or learn new things, um, you know, it was challenging to balance all of that. And I know that that's, you know, balance, um, is something that is super elusive and something that we, we struggle with. And I know in, in all the research that I've read and done, particularly about mothers and is that, you know, we proportionally do the majority of housework and childcare responsibilities in addition to whatever work we're doing, either inside or outside of the home. And so it was definitely a challenge for me to transition from that stay-at-home mom role where that was my primary responsibility was the home and the children, to this major role in running a company with six team members, with, you know, 12 clients, with, you know, working full-time. Obviously, it was an exceptionally difficult year with the pandemic on top of it. But even in general, there was a huge shift in our family and in our life and figuring out, okay, whose responsibility is it to, you know, do the dishes or order the kids' clothes that they might need because they grew? Or, you know, make dinner or clean or whatever the case may be. You know, it was a really challenging time to sort of renegotiate all of that. Because for so long, it fell on me as the default parent. And the, the shift in mindset for both myself and for my husband was definitely a challenge that, you know, we had just gotten used to the fact that all of these responsibilities fell on me. And at the beginning, it was a challenge because it seemed like my work wasn't a real job because I was just starting, it was new, I was figuring things out. You know, I often felt like I didn't know what I was doing and all the imposter syndrome things start creeping in. And so I was struggling to figure out that, what that was, what that was. You know, what was bothering me, why this was so challenging? And meanwhile, you know, you have someone who's also struggling. My husband thinking, well, is this business gonna pan out? Is this going to work? You know, is the money gonna come in? I know, why do I now have to do like all of these chores or whatever? And so that was difficult to kind of balance that. And I think I'm not alone in that, you know. When I read articles or I read research, I mean, women for generations have been struggling with that. You know, going off to work and having the responsibilities of home still fall on us or who runs to the school to pick up the kids when they're sick? Or, you know, who does, who's the person that takes them to the dentist? I mean, just yesterday, I took all three kids to the dentist, including myself. And I was just laughing to myself, thinking that it's no one's fault, but my husband's never done that. He's never gone to the dentist and sat in the chair with the hygienist cleaning his teeth and having, you know, a four-year-old hanging on to you asking a million questions. You know, there's just so many different things that we often don't even consider or don't even realize that are happening simultaneously. And so I think number one, we have to give ourselves a lot of credit for all the things that we do end up balancing and managing. And number two, recognizing that it's okay to, to make that change and to speak up and say, you know what, I'm working like 60 hours a week, even though it doesn't look like I am because I'm in my pajamas all day doing virtual school with the kids and, you know, doing client meetings and writing social media copy, you know, may not seem on the outside to, to my husband like a real job, um, you know, it, it is. And I am leading a team of other women who are also mostly mothers and we're doing really incredible work for some really amazing businesses and nonprofits. And so learning to take that seriously in myself so that others, especially other men, can take me seriously too. That was a challenge internally and then I think externally in my sphere at the time.
Absolutely. I mean, I think you have pretty much hit on one of the largest obstacles in our society. And I think this comes down to the divide between men and women and gender roles. Because exactly what you're describing, the roles that have been imposed on us since our own childhoods and even within our own family dynamics, we have seen the mother primarily attributed to the role of caretaker. That means all the household responsibilities fall on her, including child raising. Sometimes it's even paying the bills, maintaining the home, collecting groceries, undertaking all the household maintenance. And then on the other hand, you have the men and their roles that have been attributed to them as the providers, the providers of the family, the professional occupational breadwinners. And so distinction between both of the genders, I think you found affecting you very personally in your own life that you and your husband faced. And so to have to renegotiate it, it really has to be figured out by our society pondered much more and figured out how this can be negotiated, how we can move away from these rigid draconian style of gender roles and how they can be more fluid to adapt to your needs as a married couple. So I think what you're grappling with is differences. And also there are differences in temperament because men have their temperament and women have theirs. So I think this expands on a larger level, social level to our society, where we see on the whole this resistance from men to be more willing to take on support roles and to negotiate. And in your view, how do we as women, how do we handle resistance from men? And this is in general, men in our professional experiences, we often find men who are extremely resistant to change. They want to keep their hierarchy the same in, in companies, organizations, and rigid rules that they impose their criteria that they have for a perfectionist business model and one that yields the most profit versus this community are women who are more in it for societal welfare, for the social good, like your business is all about, this compassion and that flexibility that women have to, like you said, renegotiate, re-adapt, and change. Change what is not working, change life to be more comfortable for us. How do we deal with this intransigence from men that we encounter in the workplace? And, you know, for those who are married or in relationships with men that they encounter within their personal lives with them? How would you negotiate and change the masculine mindset?
Yeah. Boy, I feel like if we could solve that problem, then we'll be good. We can solve everything else after that. Um, but Roxie, what did you say?
I'm there with you, yes. If we could just solve, this is a huge problem.
I know. Um, I was listening to you talk about resistance. And to me, the word that came to mind and how we can fight resistance is with persistence. So I think for me, like in my little microcosm of my family unit, that's what it took. You know, it was years of starting small, doing like a side hustle, having, you know, a conference or something small to go to. Um, you know, where I needed my husband to step up and do childcare or like, you know, take a day off of work to take care of the kids because I had something to do for my job. Um, you know, all of that kind of built up and it was consistency and persistence on my end to not take no for an answer. There was definitely resistance there. And I think that, um, you know, if we want to take that big picture and look at it, you know, whether we're looking at, you know, American society or globally, um, persistence in continuing to send the message that, you know, it can't be done all by one person, you know, we can't do it all. Um, that our, um, you know, whether you're, I mean, there's just so many different ways to look at it. Um, whether you're in the workplace and you're either wanting to be taken seriously, wanting your ideas to be heard as, as loud as, as men's or, you know, you want your time with your family and your time outside of work to be valued equally as men and things like that. There's just so many different ways to go about it. But I think persistence and consistency from us, not that it's completely our responsibility to fix this because it's not a system that was set up by us or for us. So it's really difficult to kind of overcome that and supersede that. But I think the only way to do that is to continue to keep trying. Um, that's the only way that we are going to continue to, to rise through and to make it so that, you know, we're equal partners, whether that's in our homes or, you know, in the boardroom or, you know, wherever. That, um, that persistence, I think, is, is really important.
Yes, you're absolutely spot on. You have to keep pressing on and you're impacting that way with persistence. But I'm also wondering, what if you had engaged your husband in your career? For example, invited him to come along with you to meetings with clients? So he was able to experience the workplace as you are, your, and to join you in household activities together instead of going your separate ways? If just one day, he decided to join you in every activity, every chore, every household duty that you were engaged in? If he joined you in it, would that have changed his mindset much quicker? And maybe would, might that have shaped him to be more willing to partner with you and accept your decisions much earlier on? If you had actually engaged him, told him to take a day off to engage in your life, in your work and your home activities? Would that have changed him? And would that maybe, if we did that on a wide scale, be able to help us if in the workplace, we ask men to actually be involved, participate equally in the same activities that we are being engaged in? That that might shift this masculine mindset to be more willing to negotiate change and re-adapt to our present realities?
Hmm. I really like that idea and I, I agree with you. I think that if I had done something like, it goes reminding me of like an intern shadowing at a new job or something like that, um, I think that would have definitely helped get the point across because I think so much of the day, we all do this. You don't even really realize how much you're doing every day, the things that you're thinking about constantly, you know, all of those things. Um, you know, you're not necessarily realizing what all of that is, you know, on a minute-to-minute basis. So I think having, having him shadow me and go through my day with me of all the things that I'm thinking about, all the things that I'm planning in my head, in addition to like, you know, whatever I'm physically doing. I think that, um, that would be interesting, right? To see what his perspective on that was and vice versa too, right? Because I think we never know what, what other people are really doing and really thinking about or what worries them. Um, like I was thinking the other day, I don't know anything about the, um, we have like salt that we add to the water because it's hard water here. And I was just thinking the other day, I don't know anything about that system or like how that works or how you like add the salt or anything like that. It just dawned on me the other day and I was like, oh, this is something that's totally his realm. That if he was like, I'm too busy with work to do this, he would have to teach me how to do it, just like I would have to teach him how to do something that I normally do for the kids, right? So I think both ways that would, that would work, right? Where we could learn from each other and like the things that we worry about are the things that we think about and that we are doing on a daily basis to really understand what we're, what we're working on and really get a good picture and, and feel, um, really empathetic, I think, to what, what we're doing. And I think on a wide scale, um, I think a lot of, you know, in some of the work that I've done, especially with companies that work internationally, I think, you know, especially if you're thinking about nonprofits or, or organizations that donate, um, you know, to other countries and things like that. When you look at statistics where, when you're donating money to businesses or to men in the community versus when you donate money or provide jobs and opportunities to women in, in communities. And in general, if you, um, donate money or provide jobs and opportunities and education for women, that the communities and the families and the children all get brought up with them, whereas with the men and the businesses, that doesn't always happen. And so I think, I think the reason why that happens is that men are not aware of all of the things that are happening at home and in our communities because they're not necessarily there. And part of that is of course how the systems are set up and how everything has worked for, you know, hundreds of years. But I think part of it too is that, that's something that is, that they're protected from, that they don't get brought into that, uh, they don't get brought into our world, they don't get brought into the, about whether that's our communities, our schools, our children. You know, all of those things are things that, that we don't bring them into. So to your point, if, if I brought him into my world and into all the things that I had to do in addition to my work, which is maybe a little more tangible for him to see, you know, maybe that would have really changed his mind or broadened his perspective or made him understand not only all of the, the responsibilities and the different things that I did, but also just in the work that I do and why I think social impact is so important. You know, that, that I think in general, you know, it's a very women-centric, uh, you know, career path. And a lot of us are, are women in this field because we really value our communities and we value our societies all being uplifted together. Um, and I think that maybe if, if we did invite them in um, to really see what it's like and what we do and then the impact that that can have, you know, on education and on, you know, the, um, and on societies and in our communities. So yeah, I think that's a really great idea and a great suggestion.
I think that's something we definitely need to be more invested in and really engage men as equals in, like you put it, uh, participating in one another's worlds. And that way, there's nothing more relatable than that to fully understand one another's experiences. And also to be more willing to change one's mindset because in that way, one is seeing the world from the other's perspective. So it allows for that open-mindedness. And you raised this interesting point that has come across in my experience as well and especially in the struggles that I see in that this women-centric social impact business, we see this facet. And we see very little engagement, especially it's understandable. You know, we've been through a pandemic. And because of this pandemic, people were very much concerned with the tangibles, the medications, the healthcare, personal protective gear. So all physical aspects for protection purposes. But even prior to the pandemic though, and unfortunately, we are seeing a return to it again, is this commodified culture that we have in the U.S. Where the businesses that are invested in on a wide scale are these commodity businesses that are selling physical products and that benefit people, uh, but they are physical products. We hardly see, and I think, you know, unless the organization is a philanthropic foundation or if it's a nonprofit, we hardly see the social impact businesses being given much credibility or much publicity even, which you found a perfect niche to help contribute your efforts towards. But I mean, according to you, first of all, do you find that this commodified culture, business culture is harmful? And if it is, how do we change it? So that we are able to create a space for social impact businesses to be equally publicized like our commodified companies? Because so far, I think a lot of our social, socially conscious businesses are under the radar. They are neglected, forgotten, people don't even know we exist. How do we change this? Because it's unfair to us. And so how do we change this in this widespread, popularized, commodified corporate culture?
Yeah, you bring up a lot of really good points. And I think that it's definitely one of the reasons why I got into social impact marketing because I know the value of socially responsible businesses, whether they are physical products or otherwise. Um, and I know that amplification of those voices is really needed right now. And I know that that's an area, like that's something that I can control and I can do something about. So that's absolutely where that came from. So that's absolutely where that came from. Um, but I have seen even in the past, I would say even just five years, I've seen a huge difference in the amount of awareness of of social responsibility. I think there's a, there's several reasons for that. Number one, I think it's the just the trend generationally of where we're going and where our buying power is. And I think that for me, as like an older millennial generation, I'm um, almost thirty seven. Um, from my generation and and below, I think there is a definite awareness of really how small the world is. And I think the internet has a lot to to thank for that, right? Like we see what's happening, um, you know, in Afghanistan, the same day that it's happening where generations ago, that was not something that we would have known about for so long or even ever, you know? And I feel like because that permeates our consciousness, it it's things that we see all the time and we're very connected to each other around the world. I think because of that, we understand that our decisions that we make here are really important and that they do matter. And that's something even in in my parenting journey that I've discovered. You know, whether that's the the choices that I make for my children and, you know, whether we do cloth diapers because it's better for the environment or, you know, the food that we eat or, you know, the or if we buy secondhand clothing because it's better for the environment. Um, you know, all of those different things, I think, you know, slowly I've started to make these changes in my personal life and realizing that they they made a big impact. And so I think, you know, if you're going then to, you know, younger generations, you know, people who are ten, twenty years younger, they are, they grew up like that. They grew up from very little um, understanding that the world was so connected and that the decisions that they made impacted things on a global scale. So I think we're definitely, you know, in the next ten years or more, we're going to see a huge shift in where we spend our money. Um, I just noticed the other day, like I I'm not gonna lie, right? I shop on Amazon sometimes and I got a package from Amazon and on the front of it, it was talking about how why this package was like more sustainable or or whatever. So even Amazon realizes that this is what consumers want, like we want things to be more sustainable. We see what's happening with climate change and we want things to be different. I mean, we we are still making decisions that, you know, we're like, oh, I still want to buy my thing on Amazon and want it here tomorrow, right? But there's still this this shift in consciousness that's like, ooh, the packaging matters or, you know, where I buy it from matters or the material that it's made with matters. And so I think, you know, from a product perspective, we're seeing that shift. And then besides beside that, like on the people end of it, you know, who makes my product matters, you know? And in watching documentaries that are available on Netflix and learning more about it, you know, there's you know, uh, clothing that is super cheap, um, you know, was probably made by people that weren't paid well for it or were working in really poor working conditions, you know, these are things that we're aware of now because we have access to all that information. And so, you know, not everybody is going to make a shift and we can't all make all the changes. But I think when you're, when you're looking at that and you see it repeated over and over again in the news and in your social media feeds, you know, th- those small little changes are gonna keep happening. And I think, you know, as generations grow up and have more buying power, then I think you're going to continue to see to see those changes. So I think we're we're heading in the right direction. And then I think especially during the pandemic and during, um, you know, we had a lot of social strikes in the U S in the last year that was very public on social media in a way that it never was before. Um, there's gonna continue to be, I think, this. You know, you you take two steps forward and one step back sometimes, but I think overall, I think we're gonna be seeing a big shift and I've talked to a lot of people, whether they're just like personal friends or family of mine or just people in general that I meet. And, you know, five years ago, talking about a socially conscious business, most people were like, went right over their head and they really didn't know what I was talking about. But now when I bring it up, people are like, oh, that's really cool. That's interesting. Like what kind of stuff are you working on? So I think it's it's seeping in there slowly but surely into our like collective consciousness, I think.
Yes, it's fascinating because I really didn't know that there was much an improvement in the social conscious awareness of our society even five years ago. So I appreciate your sharing that observation because I really hadn't seen as much of it in the business world especially. And I felt like we were going backwards in my own experience. Because a lot of it is, I think, the, as we were saying earlier, this masculine driven society that I found was stuck in the past of rigidity and the whole formation having to be a certain perfectionist way approach. This whole mentality seeped through our business world. So I was seeing that, but I saw hardly social awareness. There was just a focus on the profit. And we see that even in so many uh, businesses today, it's solely about the profit. We have to make, you know, such and such X Y dollars. We have to be competitive, this competition, this drive to be top in the field and to hell with all the others. You know, we don't care about our employees or workers. They can burn themselves out sleepless nights uh, as long as we come first, you know, we get the gold star, we are on top of the food chain. And part of what I'm fearful about is I'm seeing that we are not completely out of this backwards perspective. I think to me it's backwards because of this complete negation of human beings' lives and the rise of the few elites at the top. So I think this is why the social movements that we saw broke out. We saw this with the George Floyd, the protests, because he was one of us. He was one of the people from the masses. But this has not really, in my experience, affected, I haven't seen this effect on a large level. These large corporations, you know, that we see and our even mid sized companies and our professional world, it hasn't really changed because people are stuck in the dollar, being able to reclaim revenue lost from the pandemic. So it's just about the money. It's not about the lives or means, abilities of the people behind it. So I wanted to ask you then, how do we help minorities? We are segueing into you, this video discussion with yours in a very fluid way. It's flowing along seamlessly because the last session I had with our fellow female founder from the Tempe House Collective, Miss Cheryl Nondarken. And we were discussing the drawbacks that minorities face in business today. The complete, you know, it it's just continuing invisibility. And then if as minorities, we are starting out with very little resources to begin with and say we have social impact businesses, but we cannot afford a company such as yours to publicize ourselves. How do we escape these financial difficulties that we find ourselves in? First, through client referrals or through publicity? How do we initially break out of our economic hardship? So we can be able to make steps towards, for example, engaging your services to help publicize us more massively. But before then, how do we take those initial steps? Because this is a huge drawback for us. I'm a minority woman, Cheryl from our last episode. She's also a minority and we're in the Western business world. How do we break free of these stereotypes and just this invisibility that we find ourselves in? To be able to make it, really make it and to be able to raise our businesses along with the others towards the financial self sufficiency growth and to really collaborate with others as well, to be visible enough to collaborate with others for our mutually shared happiness.
Yeah, I think it's it's doubly hard for minority women to, you know, start a business, to grow a business, to um, be seen, be heard, right? I mean, it's it is. And so I I would not say to to know what that's like or to understand that experience. But absolutely, it's something that I think about often, um, to know how do I use my place and my position in order to amplify, you know, women of color, whether they need support in their businesses, they need support in their marketing, they, you know, whatever it is that you need. Um, that's, I see that as one of my roles as, you know, a leader in the social impact marketing space to to bring along others with me, to use my my privilege that I have to be able to to bring others up with me. Um, and so that's something that is conscious at the the front of what we do at Social for Good, whether that's, you know, discounted services for um, minority owned businesses or, you know, free mentoring and coaching, um, just different things like that in in our hiring and looking to hire, you know, women of color in our in our organization. Because, um, you know, we want to amplify those voices. That's exactly why I started this, you know, and why I wanted to do it. Because I recognize that there's a lot of America and there's a lot of the world that, you know, the majority owned world doesn't see and doesn't hear. Um, and I know that to be true just because I've witnessed it, you know? And I think it's easy for me to sit back and say like, whoa, it's hard enough for me as a woman to do all of this. So I don't need to make it harder by like, you know, trying to amplify um, mar- other marginalized voices or like adding on to that. You know, that's, it's be easy for me to do that, but I just see that that's not what my role is or what my responsibility is as, you know, the CEO of Social for Good. And so, you know, part of our core values and what we do as an organization is to amplify marginalized voices. So that's a question that we ask ourselves constantly is like, how can we do better? What can we be doing? So, you know, whether that's, um, you know, listening to podcasts, talking to women like yourself, um, reading books, um, you know, really trying to, you know, taking trainings and things like that. There's a lot of, um, you know, things that that we do at Social for Good to to try to make sure that we're staying that we're staying in in contact and in communication so that we can see where the needs are, um, so that we're not blind to those. Um, and then as far as like this other part of your question where you were asking like, what can you do as a minority woman with a business and like, how do how do you do that there? Especially when you don't have the budget to, you know, hire somebody to help you with your social media or hire a coach or something like that, there are um, quite a lot of opportunities for like scholarships and free coaching and training and things like that. And I'm thinking out, I'm just thinking right now, it's like, maybe that's something that we can do is when I know about those opportunities and those things and I hear about that, to kind of share, to share that information and disseminate that so that more people hear about it. Cause I think that's also a challenge is that sometimes there's just so much information and it's hard to kind of sift through it all. But there are, um, you know, I think there are other people that recognize that need and are trying to help fill that void by, you know, offering services or scholarships or different things like that. So, um, that's one thing that came to mind to me is things that I've seen, like I want to say it's Comcast. You know, like the media giant, I think they have some kind of scholarship or something for for minority women, business owners. Um, that was just like a very specific and random thought, but um, I know that that's one thing. So, yeah, but I think it's it's a, it's a really good question and it's definitely a question that um, you know, me as as a white woman, business owner, um, should be asking myself all the time, you know, is is the work that we're doing amplifying marginalized voices? Are we asking the questions? Are we still learning and growing and making sure that we're listening above all?
I think for all of us, it's going to be a learning experience as we transition from the pandemic. And we are very much thrust into figuring out how our society should be. I hope we will not regress prior to what we were.
Totally.
For our minorities, I think we have to be aware of their needs and just exactly as you are doing. And in that case, you are setting an example, I would say, for white European Americans as to how they should behave and how they should keep in mind the other minority, other identities with whom they find themselves. I think so much is in our society in the West is very much people think primarily. And I think this also goes back to a lot of our masculinity. Uh, masculine based society is very much focused on the self. So I think we don't see enough of that awareness of the other, whether it's women and in our lives, women from diverse backgrounds. And so going forwards, we have to be inclusive in order for us to create this socially responsible world. We have to change the mindset from one race towards all our races and towards everyone who has been marginalized. What are your thoughts about bringing in? Because I just see there's so much deficiency in our economic resources for those who are in poverty or at the poverty level in our society who feel completely left out of the conversation. And, you know, you hear occasionally about these large philanthropic foundations. But unless they personally impact you, they seem like some kind of phantom of the opera. You don't even know, you don't even know that these phantoms are actually concrete or even present. And to my mind, I'm primarily thinking of the Melinda and Bill Gates Foundation. Because I hear about all their investments in the developing world and in the United States, when it comes to the medical breakthroughs, especially for current crises at hand. But I'm really not seeing their investments towards people in poverty. And I think they are missing a crucial component, which is working with women like you of your social impact business, so you can help to direct their attention where it is needed. And so what are your thoughts? How can you engage these phantom, phantomagoric foundational giants? Foundation giants in collaborating with you, giving you the revenue to lead projects and directing their attention towards minority owned businesses? People at the poverty level who want to enter into business or who are in financial hardship? Can we work together with them? Because it seems they have this vast allotment. I mean, enough to feed the entire planet if they want it. So these billions of dollars, but they're not doing it. So that's why in my mind, they're phantoms. Unless I start seeing.
Right, it's like not real.
Unless I see more concrete impact, like I'm hearing from you and yours business, social impact business. Unless I see that, how can we engage them? Because it seems like there is a big piece of the puzzle in addressing our economic hardship and it lies with them as they have the resources to do it. How do we engage them?
Yeah, that is um, a really interesting question and thought process too, to think about big organizations and who should they be partnering with in order to like make these changes? Um, and I think that's where some foundations get it right and some get it wrong. And I don't know a ton about like, you know, the inner workings of the the Gates Foundation and how they do things. But um, I think there's, there's definitely a place for philanthropy and charity. And then there's a place for for profit businesses to also be doing a better job. And so those are like two different conversations, but for i- in general, for like, you know, the big, the bigwigs, right? They, um.
Or let's say any large scale uh, institution, organization, business, any large scale entity. How should they be engaged with us? Let's say the smaller, at the smaller level, the small scale to help us with our financial difficulties and our other needs?
I think there's a couple of things that we can do. Number one is for us to recognize that we have a C at the table and that we can create that opportunity for ourselves. Now, that's easier for some people than others, right? To be frank, right? That would be easier for me, um, you know, to invite myself to that table than perhaps a woman of color. But I just think that often we sell ourselves really sh- But I just think that often we sell ourselves really short and we think, well, that, you know, the Gates Foundation, like, that is not something that I can relate to or that I belong at. And so my work doesn't belong there. I'm not doing as big of a thing as them. So, you know, that's not even a connection that I, I mean, truthfully, before you mentioned that, that was not even a, a thought of mine that, you know, a, a large foundation like that would be, you know, an organization that we, we could work with. You know, that never crossed my mind because I never thought about it that way, right? We kind of put ourselves in these tiny little boxes. Um, so I think part of that is on us, right? That it's our, you know, we can, we can dream bigger and we can invite ourselves to these tables. Because, you know, sometimes they'll say yes. And then we can bring the issues that we see on our level to their big table um, and their big pockets and definitely, you know, advocate for that. So I think that's one thing that, that we can do. And the other thing I was thinking about was, you know, for me and starting my business, that was definitely a core value for me is, um, you know, offering these services and, um, you know, hiring people of color and like doing all these things, that was all values that I had. And so as I continue to grow, to continue to maintain that as my goal, to like increase that, to increase, you know, what I'm able to do with my platform as it grows. And I think a lot of times we end up seeing a drop off. And so I think it continues to be our responsibility to continue to do the work, to reflect, to keep learning and listening so that we continue to bring up people with us instead of leaving them behind when we get to this like certain point. Um, because I think that's what happens a lot. Um, and it's difficult to do that. It's easier, I think, to kind of, you know, keep running with, with something and, and not have to bring people along or not have to help other people up along the way. Because that might set your business back or it might set your revenue back or whatever the case may be, whatever reason that you're going to be like trying to convince yourself why you shouldn't stick to those original core values that you had, you know, instead of like selling out or something like that. So I think, you know, as for these huge corporations, you know, maybe they never even started out that way. So the hope of, of them bringing people up with them was probably not even something on their radar. But I think for me, I'm starting small, who knows where it'll go? And if I lose sight of why I originally started it, then, uh, you know, then it just becomes just like every, everyone else. So I think keeping sight of that. And so I think the more examples that we have of that, um, and the bigger that those examples get because, you know, we are seeing people that value that. I think there's going to be just continued pressure for others to do the same. Um, and I think there, there's lots of, of corporations that have done, you know, different things from consumer and constituent pressure, um, to want to see things change. And I think that that's, you know, we all have to do our part, whatever we have control over. So, I don't know, I like the idea of inviting ourselves to the table and saying, hey, we see what's going on here. We live it every day. We understand what's going on, um, and we know how to fix it. We just need, you know, basically we just need the revenue, but we know what the solutions are. Or, you know, we have the connections in this community to know, you know, what they need. And so I think that's where some philanthropies and businesses get it right. Where they allow, you know, whether it's internationally and they allow the local community to, to manage it or they hire for work instead of just giving money, um, for particular things that perhaps they don't need. You know, there's, there's different ways of doing it well and doing it that's actually of service and of value. And then, you know, there's ways of doing it incorrectly. And I think it's, um, also up to us and our responsibility to, to call that out when it's not being done correctly or it's, or it's actually harmful instead of good. And, you know, continuing to be persistent in that voice and, and making sure that people, um, making sure that they hear you.
Absolutely, definitely. Now, exactly these kinds of thoughts, thinking big will land you big.
Yeah, I mean, what is the worst that, that Bill Gates would say is no, I guess, right? Like, they say, they say no to the question that you don't ask.
More in, much more engagement from people like him. I mean, even if it's someone who is from everyday, our everyday society, someone completely invisible or unknown, I would like to see more responses from them instead of some, you know, distant automated reply that they give to people, but to have a personal outreach to people who are from communities, the neighborhoods, local levels, so that their voices are heard, that they are being considered, acknowledged. And that's small gesture of consideration would make a huge difference in people's lives. But I'm glad to hear from you that some of these philanthropic companies or socially aware companies are doing it already. Because I just had lost faith quite a while back in seeing, first of all, communities still in hardship. And since the pandemic, I found people also of economic hardship and deprivation. I met them, people from this position in life of being in economic hardship. And maybe all of us agree that there has to be a fundamental change because the way our society is running, it's, it's not impacting as it should every person in that difficulty, in that invisibility. And it's not doing enough to bring our people out of it. And also are you, people who are young and who are starting out with very little. They see a hurdle in the large mountain they have to climb and with very little support. I think a lot of the problem is the little support that is out there. So if these philanthropic entities can change and offer greater support, I think we are on our way closer to our step to this ideal society that you are striving towards, that we all want to see happen. We are heading towards that society. And if we see greater support from each person, especially the people with the resources. They have to be much more engaged and involved than they were in the past. And so that way, I think we are going to see greater progress. I think greater financial relief for people in our depths of despair, in the most depths of despair, we'll see it.
Yeah, and I think a lot of it is visibility. And I think that's why, um, you know, things shifted a little during the pandemic. And I think at least accelerated a little quicker than they would have normally because you got to see, you couldn't look away. You got to see how stark some of the differences are. And I think sometimes people are just, are too busy and self-centered with their own lives. They're just not paying attention and they're not forced to see what other people are really going through, through no fault of their own. You know, I think that's a lot, that's a, a story that gets told a lot that like, you know, if you just work hard and all that stuff, you can like overcome everything. And that's obviously not the case. So, um, you know, if that's all you had to do, I think we'd all be millionaires, right? But I think that, you know, just work hard. It's like, okay, cool, I'll keep working hard, but also not making any money. You know, like that's a lot of people's experience, right? For so many factors, there's just so many things. So I think.
Or working hard to enrich the other, not you, not yourself, but you're enriching your boss, your supervisor, all these unnamed invisible corporate at the top executives.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I mean, we certainly still have a long way to go. We have a long way to go and, you know, my like, uh, poly-positive outlook on it, I don't want that to overshadow like the difficulty that, that we're in and just kind of how hard it is for so many people. Um, and I take that like positive worldview that I tend to have and that's what I channel into my work and into, you know, what keeps me going and what keeps me motivated to do the work that I do. Um, I think that positive view is, is important for that because so much of, of the world and of our country and like the way that people are treated and the way, um, you know, our, our climate is and all, all those things, you know? It can be, um, really disheartening, um, you know, when you see us take two steps forward and then go backwards, right? And we have to kind of like recoup again and, and keep going. Um, you know, that's, that's difficult, you know, we still have a very long way to go. But I'm encouraged by what I've seen over the last five years as far as just sort of a, an understanding if maybe there's not going to be any action taken. There's still some understanding that there's some struggle in the world and we, we have the power, all of us, to make changes in our day-to-day life that can really impact that. So I'm, I'm encouraged by, by that.
I would say you are a beacon of hope, Cara. And for all of us with the social impact marketing message and business that you are putting out into the world, you are really that optimism that we all need. And I am going to include your bio and website link in the description box below. So everybody out there, please share this video and financially and socially support Cara and her Social for Good business. Out there, do good in your lives. And we really need to push the philanthropic foundations. So go after Bill Gates.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if anybody knows Bill Gates, like, let me make the connection.
Go pester as much as you want.
Yeah.
Need to get the, uh, foundation, our corporate executives, giants on board to support Cara and businesses like hers for the social welfare and for improving all of us, our lives on a widespread level socially. So please, everyone, share the video and please do check out Cara's bio and website link. And as I have in the customary habit, I end usually on a visual note. And so I have from my container of memorabilia, this visual, which is a ribbon. It's a wrapping ribbon that you see on presents. And so this ribbon, silver lining ribbon, I call it, reminds me of you, Cara. Because of all the strands that make you up to be the positive, optimistic, expansive, vivaciously social person you are and the ethical morality that is intertwined in who you are. This reminds me exactly of you and your outputs into the world. You are creating so much expansive goodness out there, so much morality and changing people's lives through concern, showing just concern, compassion for them on this wide level. You've put yourself aside, even sacrificed yourself to take care of your family, but our society on this wide level. And for that, it's truly commendable. You are a role model for our entire society. And this more than anything, it shows your ability to bounce back from difficulty. All the difficulties you faced through your work situations, through your education, the corruption that you might have seen, all triggered you. It pushed you forward to move upwards, towards ethics, morality and virtues for societal service instead of the other way, instead of regressing downwards. So you are this resilience and a role model for all of us with your positive thinking in how we should move forward together. And together, we help each other with flexibility and adaptability, spread the message and actually serve our society on a wide level. Congratulations on your business and thank you for being the silver lining that all of us need in our lives, pushing us forwards towards joy and optimism. Any final words, any comments or words?
Wow, no, that was, that was a beautiful analogy. I, I love that. Um, no, I just really appreciate this conversation. I love talking with other, um, women in business about, you know, the state of our society and the impact that we can have on it, especially when we work together um, and we support each other. So I really value all of the work that you are doing. Um, and I really appreciate this conversation and the opportunity to connect. So thank you so much for having me. I had a really great time talking with you.
Same here. Thank you so much, Cara. I thoroughly enjoyed our conversation. And I will post your website and link in the description box to this video. Everyone, until we meet again, I wish you all health, happiness and prosperity.